Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, October the 7th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board.
You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, September 16th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have five pages of wastewater claims in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-six cents. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated October 7th, 2019, in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, October the 7th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, September 16th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have fifty pages of corporate claims in the amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty cents. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I do have a question, please. On page six, the very last line item. It's for Lamping and H VAC for fire subscription for eighteen hundred dollars.
I'm sure that's for their heating and air conditioning, Rob. It was put in the fire subscriptions category.
I'd have to go back and research the categories. Probably eighteen hundred was for the ice machine.
Gotcha.
The ice machine that went down.
Okay, thank you.
The previous one had us eighteen hundred.
Yep.
And George for this HVAC system.
I think the description one threw me off, so.
Yeah, well, and it says capital outlays, so.
Yep, okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
Dave, you say you didn't have any questions?
No.
No further questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated October 7th, 2019, in the amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty cents.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have several items tonight. And the first one is a request for 5K run-walk Franciscan Alliance. Dan, could you read it into the record?
Certainly. Board of Works and Safety. Beech Grove has been home to Franciscan Alliance information services since its inception in nineteen sixty-eight. We are seeking permission to host a 5K run-walk event in the city of Beech Grove. We are partnering with Corey Nguyen, band director at Beech Grove High School, as the beneficiary of the proceeds of the event. Our goal is to raise enough funds to procure a technology purchase that will enable the development of future band students. We are seeking support services and permission to host the event, which is tentatively planned to take place on April 11th, 2020, at 10:00 AM. Attached, you will find a map of the proposed route planned for the event, along with proposed staging and water stops. Franciscan Alliance is seeking insurance for the event and will reference the City of Beech Grove. As the additional insured, proof of insurance will be provided prior to the event. Sincerely, Cindy Erickson.
Thank you, Dan. I pass this out to Department Head, so if any of you have any issue with it. I'll open it up to the Board members.
I have no questions.
I have nothing. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request from Franciscan Alliance concerning a 5K run-walk event in the city of Beech Grove.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up is certification of payment for Redford Drive drainage improvement. Brad, did you want to comment on this?
So, this is the project that we did. It's been quite a while, but we keep a retainage on these projects just so that the contractor finishes up everything. A lot of things are kind of late in the game as far as turf restoration, and there's always a few things when we find a walkthrough. So, we keep a retainage of money, and then, once they've satisfied that list, we're like a punch list, is what we call it, then we basically release the project at that point, pay out the remaining balance, and then it's under one year of warranty. And that's where we're at on this one.
So, if the Board approves it, the amount remaining is seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents, then we would owe that to who?
Smith.
Smith, okay. And everything's done on this project?
Yes, it's, everything's fine now at this point. Phil had a couple of things that he wanted them to restore in people's yards in that area, and they have done so. So, we're, we're fine to close it out. And Westler is usually involved as well with the punch list and with the, that final itemized invoice. So, this one is ready to close out for us.
All right, stay up there. Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve, to pay the retainage, remaining retainage, seven hundred, seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Do you have the N dot?
Yeah.
Can you take us through that again, Brad?
Yes. Thank you.
Email me back about that contract, and they wanted it, they wanted the dates to all match. I guess there were some, a couple of dates that were a little different, so we might want to use September 16th for, Dan, you hadn't put a date, and they needed that from you. And then, a couple of the dates didn't match up, and then, we didn't sign it in blue ink, and that's, you know.
What date should we use?
The unforgivable sin. September 16th would be fine, because that was the meeting we signed it at. So, they sent it back to me and said, you have to redo this, so, not a big deal.
Well, let's go ahead and sign it and get it.
Do you have blue ink?
Yes.
Blue?
Brad brought the pen.
You know, and we've, we've done it before, and they've not said anything, but they have a brand-new employee in that position, and I think she's doing everything exactly by the book. Yes.
Brad, I've got a question for you on a different topic. We've got a check that's been sent on my desk for a month for two thousand dollars,
Is that correct? Or one of them did?
Mine actually said Clerk Treasurer on it. and it was for the Greenway. Normally, they do say a test, so I need to look and see if it's somewhere else on there And I thought it was to go to Little ones Sons, but when I took it down to them, that's too. not their corporate name, so I don't know if we had the initials, because it was supposed And the Dun's number is not on there if you need it.
I put it on there last time, when I, right before I delivered it, but I can, I can add
to go to Texas. And I asked Tom Hand about it.
it to this one as well before I take it out there.
He was going to find out.
I hand-deliver these to them in Greenfield, just because I don't, they're originals, and
I've asked several other people.
Probably the person to talk to would be Trent, so I can, I can reach out to him. I don't like to.
That way, you know they got it.
Yes.
I think this.
I might come by in the morning and look at it or take a screenshot of it and see if I
That's it.
Appreciate it. Might double-check it.
Boy, it is awful pretty in blue.
can.
Right, and that's fine. Oh, yeah. I think the, the initials in Texas for Little's is CSI, if I'm not mistaken, something like You've got to make sure it's not a copy, apparently. Awesome, that's good. Thank you. that. Anyway, we've got other initials, and.
Request to hire firefighter.
I know we had to purchase some land, and that's.
Chief?
Mayor and Board, at this time, I would like to ask the Board of Works and Safety
Just under your name, didn't it?
Probably what that's for.
It was for their attorney fees, and they donated the land.
Sign it and below your signature print.
Gotcha.
Yeah, makes sense. That's, I'm sure that's.
But I haven't seen you to really ask your, when I have, I forgot about it.
Yeah, okay.
for the approval to fill one firefighter position for January 2020. This hiring replaced Michael Goins due to his retirement. This position will be filled off of our 2019 hiring list. I anticipate bringing in name four for approval at our December Board of Works meeting. This position is in our 2020 budget. And a little background, what this will allow us to do is go ahead and pick firefighter off our current list, send him through public safety, medical, and through the merit board process to get him approved. In the December meeting, I would bring a name, a start date, and the salary to this Board for final approval.
Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next order of business is Beech Grove Police Department resignation. Chief?
Dear Chief Swartz, please accept this letter as my formal notification that I am resigning from my position as a patrol officer with Beech Grove Police Department. My last day will be September 30th, 2019. Thank you for the opportunity to work in this position for the last ten months. I have enjoyed and appreciated the experience I've gained from this job. I've learned a great deal from working here and will carry those with me through my career elsewhere. Sincerely, Brockton Lovell.
Floor is open for any questions or comments from Board members.
He's only here ten months. I have nothing else.
I appreciate him coming forward and submitting his resignation.
Yes, I do too, and it was, it was a good thing on his part.
Yeah.
It was a good thing for all of us.
Am I missing something?
Yeah, the first year that you are employed here, you're on probation and could be dismissed for any just cause. So, if that may be the, it may be an option, it's better to step aside.
No, the only question I was going to have was the next one on is pay. So, we're probably going to do this separately and then do the pay or.
I don't have that one. Okay. But I want to go ahead and, Dave, do you have any other comment?
No, sir.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept Brockton Lovell's letter of resignation.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. And I also want, ask for a motion to allow the chief to fill this vacant position.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries.
Okay, Dan.
Okay, my only question is Mark. He would have been on the regular timesheet for the fifty-eight hours of pay that was owed to him. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yes.
So, we don't have to do anything on that. What about his HRT?
Well, that was probably a question that I was going to have for you. We owe him fifty-eight hours.
Okay.
We owe him forty-two for HRT and a sixteen-hours personal day. If you want us to do any timesheet, or you just want to do a check?
I'd like for it all to be on one timesheet if at all possible. That way, in case the, when the State Board of Accounts comes in and looks at it, we can refer back to that and say, well, here's where he got paid for everything. And that's probably going to be hard, because I think pay comes out this coming Friday, if I'm not mistaken, so.
He already has paid for that. This was, so we'll have to do two pays.
Okay, so this is over and above?
This is over and above when he resigned on the 30th. That was, that was only included in the previous pay.
Okay.
So, we'll have to do two pay sheets.
Okay.
Do the fifty-eight.
And she's already turned in the pay for this coming Friday, so if we can do one for in two weeks with everything on it and have him over and done with at that time.
We'd probably have to do two of them, because the Board or the State Board of Accounts looks at fifty-eight hours. There'd be eighteen hours, not at time and a half, and they might question that, or do we put a note on it, or?
We could probably just put a note on it stating, this is the reason why, put the resignation letter with it, and state this as payment info.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right. I think that's it, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Request to surplus equipment, DPW. Brad?
Your Board, the Department of Public Works would like to surplus the following vehicles for the upcoming auction on Saturday, October 26th. We have a 1993 GMC 3500 dump truck. I've put the VIN on there for your information, and a 1995 Chevy 3500 dump truck. These vehicles are no longer in service at DPW. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns. We had the one dump truck that the axle fell out at the beginning of this year, I believe, and I, we actually sold that to a guy that was willing to just come get it. These two have some pretty significant repairs that need done. As you can see from the year, and with us getting two new ones, and hopefully a new one next year, there's really no need to keep them in our fleet, so we were hoping to get rid of them.
Board members have questions or comments?
I have none.
Do you have any idea approximately mileage on these?
I have to, I'd have to look.
It's not a big deal.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's, or the Director's request to surplus two dump trucks.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Brad, a couple of things. Can you talk about the sewer backup?
Yeah, so we have a really bad situation going on in Emerson Avenue right now. There is a main that's backed up, right, pretty much just south of Burger King. It's the northbound side, the westbound lane, there's a manhole. And so, they worked on it all afternoon. We had to call Commercial Sewer, because our jet truck is just not even close to being equipped to, to deal with something like this. They did get a little relief for a while, but it's almost like it moved according to Phil to the next manhole down Emerson. So, they're coming back in the morning. That's the fastest they can get back here with a VAC truck, because the jet truck is not accomplishing what they want to accomplish. We've only had two calls, one from a business that is on the same road as Taco Bell as you had back there. It's called Pony Express or something like that. They were affected by it, and then Nathan Tupper, if you guys know who he is, he does some concrete work for us. He's been affected by it. He didn't get affected by it until it moved to the next manhole, and then somehow it affected his line. So, we are, Phil's working on it. We're at the mercy of the contractor. Like we've mentioned before, being in the sewer business is tough when you don't have the right equipment. And so, we're sort of at the mercy of, mercy of Commercial Sewer to bring out the, the right truck and get this thing open, but it is the same line that the high school's on, Burger King, Taco Bell. It would be hard to pinpoint who did what. We just know it's backed up and not an easy one to get open, so that's kind of where we stand for now.
Thank you. And could you comment on the letting for Arlington?
Yeah, so this, or maybe next, or no, this Thursday, the 10th. That roundabout at Arlington and Churchman lets again through N dot. They did increase the cost, which we hope will help us with the bids that come in. N dot has like four different criteria that the bid has to meet one of the four before it's considered a sex, a successful letting. One is you either have to get a minimum of five bids. One of the bids, if you only get, if you get less than five, one of them has to be within fifteen percent of the engineer's estimate. Last time, we only got one bid, and it was over fifteen percent over that estimate. So, we, we thought the estimate might have been a little low on the engineer's side, so we increased it a little bit. We think that'll help, but we also think moving the construction season to 2020, instead of trying to squeeze that in in the fall of this year, will help a lot. So, we've already seen some good responses from some companies that we think are going to bid on it. So, we hope that that will bid successfully this Thursday, and then, if so, we look to be under construction like next Memorial Day through Labor Day of 2020.
That'll be a really good thing. All right, thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Request to surplus some office furniture at City Hall. In these two rooms adjacent to the council chamber, there's two tables, old tables and nine old chairs that I would, they have no value, and I'd like to declare them as surplus equipment. So, they're, they have no value. And we received some new chairs and tables from an adult daycare center out on Victory Drive, so we just want to make room for those, so. At this time, I would like to declare the following office items. Furniture as surplus items, two tables, nine chairs. These furniture, furniture items are located in the rooms adjacent to the council chambers. Upon approval, the furniture items will be discarded. Any questions or comments?
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Do you have the N dot?
Yeah.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Can you take us through that again, Brad?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, the N dot.
Email me back about that contract, and they wanted it, they wanted the dates to all match. I guess there were some, a couple of dates that were a little different, so we might want to use September 16th for, Dan, you hadn't put a date, and they needed that from you. And then, a couple of the dates didn't match up, and then, we, we didn't sign it in blue ink, and that's, you know.
What date should we use?
The unforgivable sin. September 16th would be fine, because that was the meeting we signed it at. So, they sent it back to me and said, you have to redo this, so, not a big deal.
Well, let's go ahead and sign it and get it.
Do you have blue ink?
Yes.
Blue?
Brad brought, brought the pen.
You know, and we've, we've done it before, and they've not said anything, but they have a, a brand-new employee in that position, and I think she's doing everything exactly by the book. Yes.
Brad, I've got a question for you on a different topic. We've got a check that's been sent on my desk for a month for two thousand dollars, and it was for the Greenway. And I thought it was to go to Little ones Sons, but when I took it down to them, that's not their corporate name, so I don't know if we had the initials, because it was supposed to go to Texas. And I asked Tom Hand about it. He was going to find out. I've asked several other people.
Probably the person to talk to would be Trent, so I can, I can reach out to him. I might come by in the morning and look at it or take a screenshot of it and see if I can.
Right, and that's fine. I think the, the initials in Texas for Little's is CSI, if I'm not mistaken, something like that. Anyway, we've got other initials, and.
I know we had to purchase some land, and that's.
Just under your name, didn't it?
Probably what that's for.
It was for their attorney fees, and they donated the land.
Sign it and below your signature print.
Yeah, makes sense. That's, I'm sure that's.
But I haven't seen you to really ask your, when I have, I forgot about it.
Yeah, okay. Your spot says attest. Is that correct? Or one of them did?
Mine actually said Clerk Treasurer on it.
Okay.
Normally, they do say a test, so I need to look and see if it's somewhere else on there too. And the Dun's number is not on there if you need it.
I put it on there last time, when I, right before I delivered it, but I can, I can add it to this one as well before I take it out there. I hand-deliver these to them in Greenfield, just because I don't, they're originals, and I don't like to.
That way, you know they got it.
Yes.
I think this.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Might double-check it.
Boy, it is awful pretty in blue.
Oh, yeah. You've got to make sure it's not a copy, apparently. Awesome, that's good. Thank you.
Request to hire firefighter. Chief?
Mayor and Board, at this time, I would like to ask the Board of Works and Safety for the approval to fill one firefighter position for January 2020. This hiring replaced Michael Goins due to his retirement. This position will be filled off of our 2019 hiring list. I anticipate bringing in name four for approval at our December Board of Works meeting. This position is in our 2020 budget. And a little background, what this will allow us to do is go ahead and pick firefighter off our current list, send him through public safety, medical, and through the merit board process to get him approved. In the December meeting, I would bring a name, a start date, and the salary to this Board for final approval.
Floor is open for any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next order of business is Beech Grove Police Department resignation. Chief?
Good evening. Dear Chief Swartz, please accept this letter as my formal notification that I am resigning from my position as a patrol officer with Beech Grove Police Department. My last day will be September 30th, 2019. Thank you for the opportunity to work in this position for the last ten months. I have enjoyed and appreciated the experience I've gained from this job. I've learned a great deal from working here and will carry those with me through my career elsewhere. Sincerely, Brockton Lovell.
Floor is open for any questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
for holding this position. Emily Holcraft, Tasha Ramey ended her position at the community center on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. She is no longer employed by the city of Beach Grove. Emily Holcraft will be replacing Tasha Ramey as a program assistant.
Any floors open for any questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve, uh, Emily Holcraft for part-time employment at the Hornet Park Community Center.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. Thank you, Board. Last item is handicap parking application. Dan, if you wanted to go through this or not.
Okay, um, it looks like everything is in order. Uh, the address, uh, it's three thirty-eight North Sixteenth and, uh, she's got her handicap placard and so forth in there, so I think everything's there it's needed. So I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Board. Do I have any comments?
I have none.
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the parking permit for Hariana Ross.
Make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. That concludes new business. Uh, comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at six twenty-nine P.M. Our city council will convene this evening at seven P.M. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove and at this time we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, October the seventh, two thousand nineteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Jim Varex, Council at Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Vita Mascari, Council District Two.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council District One.
Chris Duffer, Council District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, under special presentations this evening, the youth council will not return until, uh, the November fourth meeting. I have, uh, Fire Prevention Week proclamation. Chief? Wanted to read this into the record, uh, Fire Prevention Week proclamation to dis- designate the week of October sixth through the twelfth as Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Beach Grove, Indiana is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Beach Grove. And whereas home fires killed two thousand six hundred and thirty people in the United States in two thousand eighteen, according to the National Fire Protection Association, our departments in the United States responded to over three hundred and fifty-seven thousand home fires. And whereas residents need to create and practice a home fire escape plan with everyone in the household. And whereas Beach Grove residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the two thousand nineteen Fire Prevention Week theme, not every hero wears a cape. Plan and practice your escape effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, do hereby proclaim October sixth to October twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout our city and I urge all residents of the city of Beach Grove to create and practice a home escape plan in case of a fire and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Beach Grove Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week, two thousand nineteen. Chief?
Um, Mayor and Council, I think we greatly appreciate this proclamation that you made this week. Um, most importantly, um, I would like to recognize our firefighters, our men and women that are here, who's out on the front lines twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, um, to protect and serve the citizens of Beach Grove and the surrounding area. Um, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Walk to Remember proclamation, uh, and I invite Joni Ketchall to join me at the podium. This is a longstanding, uh, event in our city and look forward to, uh, to, uh, participating again next Saturday. But I want to read the pro- uh, proclamation to commemorate Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October marks the occasion of National SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, observances across the United States focused on generating public understanding, compassion for bereaved families and support for medical research. Whereas each year approximately one million pregnancies in the United States end in miscarried stillbirth or the death of a newborn baby. Whereas each year more than twenty-six thousand families experience the stillbirth of a precious baby. Whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should not be trivialized. Whereas State Health Commissioner Dr. Jerome Adams has voiced concern about the Indiana's infant mortality rate. Where on average, seven Hoosier babies for every one thousand births will not live to see their first birthday. And whereas the observance of SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Month may provide validation to those who have lost a baby through miscarried, stillbirth, SIDS, or other postnatal death. Whereas recognizing SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month will provide the citizens of Beach Grove with an opportunity to increase their understanding of the great tragedy involved in the death of unborn and newborn babies. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim the month of October Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in the city of Beach Grove. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana to be affixed the seventh day of October, two thousand ni- uh, nineteen. I'd like to introduce Joni Ketchall, uh, who has spearheaded this, uh, initiative for many, many years, a dedicated employee of, uh, St. Francis Hospital, South Campus, so. Joni, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council and Sid- uh, city of Beach Grove. It has been an event that's happened here for the last thirty-four years, so that's kind of amazing that Beach Grove has really loved on, um, these families who've experienced pregnancy loss and, and supported them through all these years. It has opened up to the entire city. We even have people that come from other states still that maybe have moved and they have come back, so, um, all the hospitals kind of help support it. St. Vincent, um, Methodist, IU, uh, Communities, uh, Eskenazi, they are all there and support their families and invite their families. So thank you to Beach Grove for so many years of supporting these families.
Right. Always good to see you.
Yeah.
Uh, how many participants this Saturday?
Um, we're up to about one thousand five hundred and fifty-five to sixty, somewhere in there, so it's, it's big. Michael, we ready? Where are you?
We're ready.
Alright.
Alright, thank you Joni. Alright.
Thank you.
Council, um, you have two sets of minutes. Uh, the first minute is for the meeting dated September the third, two thousand nineteen. Yes, Chris?
On the last page, uh, I was absent from this meeting. I was on vacation, but it says that I moved to adjourn. And I don't remember doing that.
We thought you did.
I think it was probably.
Were you here the third or the six, gone the sixteenth?
I was gone, I was going on the third.
Okay, I have to go back and listen, see who it was.
Yeah, 'cause it says you were absent.
You're not like the flash or anything, you didn't, you know?
It was probably Liz. She just wanted a meeting to get over since I wasn't here with her.
Um, any other questions, comments, uh, concerning the minutes dated September third? If not, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, approve the minutes with the one change.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. The second and last set of minutes is Tuesday, September the sixteenth, or Monday, September sixteenth. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
My second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Public comments, uh, Greg?
Yes, uh, Mr. Coker. So you please state your address and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Kevin Cocker. Address is nine forty-four Timber Grove Place, Beach Grove, Indiana, four-six, one oh-seven, District Three. Council members and mayor, uh, I'm here today, uh, respectfully, I want to address the mayor tonight. Uh, I have tried to get ahold of you myself at least one time and I've tried to let you know that I'm very interested in speaking about this proposed sewer for police station project. Respectfully, I want to address the mayor tonight. Mayor, it is, uh, wrong of you to provide sp- uh, not to provide specific information and make yourself available to answer questions by the citizens of the community. You have created a lot of confusion among citizens. You are not, uh, you will not meet directly with citizens, but you choose to meet with big time utility managers and businessmen in private to sell off the Beach Grove sewer system assets in order to fund a new police station as per your statements that I understand. Maybe this is a diversion. I feel it is a diversion. In your last budget meeting, you show that the Beach Grove sewer system is solvent. However, rather than, uh, plan maintenance, improvements and with the monies collected from payers to have, uh, uh, the work done to the sewers on a monthly, uh, basis or even an annual basis, this isn't getting done. The money is diverted to other things. This is my understanding. Uh, Mayor, big business utilities are in the, uh, business because they see a lot, a big profit. They want to buy cheap and sell high. You will hurt growth, promotion, and the citizens of Beach Grove. I challenge that this has happened in other communities and the sewer bills will more than double immediately upon that situation, if that comes to fruition. As far as the police department, I think we need to do whatever needs to be done to support them. I certainly think the Beach Grove Police Department is outstanding. Uh, I look at this entanglement of funds for sewers to go into police funding as being something that will create problems down the road for them as well.
Sir, your three minutes is almost up.
Okay, in short, Mayor, make no mistake about it. Your intention to privatize and divert create big problems for all citizens who live in the fantastic community of Beach Grove will cause increases. I thank you for your time.
Sir?
Yes.
You do know he had three open town hall meetings about that, right?
Uh, I was, I was not aware of that. Where were?
At least three.
At least three.
Where were?
They were, they were public size, they were at the community.
Community center.
Well, so the council knows, I was watching Channel Eight News at eight o'clock one night and they said there was a protest to sell the sewer systems in Beach Grove. That was the first I became aware of it. I don't normally get riled up, but anytime you rob from Peter, as I've said before to many people, to pay Paul, there's something wrong. And you're trying to hide something and I'm telling you right now, everyone, these big businesses are in it for profit. They don't care about Beach Grove. We have to figure out the problems ourselves. And when I found out the sewer system is solvent, that told me a lot. And that we're taking monies that payers pay in in good faith and we're distributing it somewhere else and we're not trying to provide for potential growth or other things, I'm upset. I'm upset. I've waited about a month and a half to have this discussion now. And in discussing it with other citizens, I'm not alone in my feelings. Now, that doesn't mean we can't readjust and work together for whatever the needs are. I just, I just moved here four years ago. I'm just coming to understand some of these needs. But to take something solvent, what does it mean to a person to sell off assets? It means you're looking to go under. You're looking for bankruptcy. The house is broken. It has a leak, so let's sell it off and go buy a brand-new Corvette. You know, maybe we can't afford that.
Sir, I.
I just ask people to caution and slow up. That's all I'm asking.
I, I really wish you would attend those meetings.
Yeah.
Well, I wished I would have known about it too. I have been on autopilot, but I will not be.
I would like to know where you're, and I'll be glad to talk to you as well anytime. You can have my card. I'll give you my phone number. I'd be glad to talk with you and I'd like to know where you're getting your information from.
I've got my.
Every member on this council voted to proceed to where we are now. Every member on this council, including your own district representative, voted to be where we are now with this process. Everyone.
Okay.
So it's not, it wasn't the mayor.
So everybody else is doing it. Let's do it. I'm just cautioning you now.
Everyone.
I've lived in two communities that have sold off their sewer system.
What, what really?
That have sold off their assets.
What's, what community?
I lived in Marion, Indiana, and I've lived in Jonesboro, Indiana, and I'm telling you now, it created double, triple user fees.
And that was the wastewater? You're talking about?
Yes, I'm talking wastewater. Instead of a flat fee, they went to a measured fee and boy, did they jack the charges up right away.
Can you recall what companies, what, what companies?
You know, that I can't remember. That was in Jonesboro, Indiana. Um, Marion, Indiana had, uh, similar pursuits, although they didn't sell the whole thing off. They were looking to sell off parts of it. I'm just saying, you can't divert funds and come out ahead. That is no way to, to, uh, fund pensions in the future for the police and fire department.
I would like to know.
Do you think that'll happen?
Can you share with who's giving you, is there a name, who's giving you that information?
I know this from personal experience. Nobody's giving it.
Who's telling you what you're told, telling us? Somebody in Beach Grove is giving you this information that you're telling us tonight?
It's only, it's only what I've seen on the videos on the library. It's what I have studied up on. It's what Channel Eight News reported when I first got it, all up in arms about it. I mean, I, I don't see people around here being able to afford a quadrupled sewer bill, do you? I, I'm just gonna ask you.
You can look my name up on the website, Elizabeth Lamping.
Okay.
You can email me. We will contact and I'll be glad to talk to you.
I will be glad to speak with you as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Susan McMillan?
Good evening. I didn't come to talk about the sewer, but I'd like to say I don't know him, but I agree with him. Anyone with any common sense knows that if a business is bugging by the sewer, they're doing it to make money. They're not gonna keep our rates the same. But that's not why I'm here this evening. I'm here to speak to you about general ordinance number ten. Um, it's the part, two-hour parking ordinance and I ran out of ink today, so for that I apologize. But this is what we deal with at our business on a daily basis. This is a Monday when the barber shop was closed. And Nix, who's up the street, which owns the business that the back of it looks like this. You know, nothing's ever done to them. They've got so much trash back there. If you drive by there on your way home tonight, you'll see what I'm talking about. But, um, they take about five to six of the nine parking places that we have on the side of our building. So I am here to ask that you enforce the two-hour parking limit on the si- from Fifth and Main to Fifth and the alley. Because, um, it's difficult for us to conduct business when we're left with four parking spaces and there's two businesses there. And those part, that none of the, that business is not there. And they have all that room behind their building with the chance if they clean up some of the junk, that they could, um, actually park their vehicles. And then not to mention, they park a great big semi, which I didn't, it's parked down there now. It's, it's takes two parking places. They park it there every night. Their employees, they dump their trash. They clean their cars out and dump their trash, so Norman and I have to go out and pick up the trash and stuff. Or they'll dump trash out of that great big truck at night when they pull it up. And like I said, it's, it's not fair that, and we've put up with this for over a year and a half. And I'm not going to point out anyone, but I brought this to the attention and I thought it was gonna be brought up at a meeting many months ago. And it hasn't been. And like I said, that was a Monday that we're dealing with, so there's no barber shop parking people on there at all. And the only other parking is me. It's just me. And that time they only had four of the nine spaces taken. But typically, they have about five or six of the parking spaces of the nine parking spaces that we have. And like this, when I stopped and took a picture of this, the lady that lives right behind him, I have no idea who she is. One of you guys might. But, um, she said, are you going to turn that in? And I've actually called the mayor's action line in Indianapolis, hoping to get something done. I said, I am. She said, thank you, because I've turned it in several times and nothing's been done with him, so it's pretty trashy. And years ago, eight years ago, when Daniel first came to office, I had a, um, I had a dumpster and Indianapolis came through and made us get rid of our dumpsters if, if they weren't enclosed. So we either had to enclose them or get rid of them. So I got rid of mine and I just got trash cans. Of course, we keep ours nice and neat. And, um, but this guy, for some reason, I, I don't know why, you know, my neighbor got compliance put on him because he had a little bit of wood on his yard. And you know what's done to this guy? Nothing. Look at all the broken grass, glass there. I mean, it, it, it's, it's pretty pathetic, really. So anyway, I'd appreciate it. Yes.
This is my district.
Go ahead, Vito. Okay.
I'll, I'll come talk to you this week. We'll get this sorted out. Um, is it posted on that right there in front of Rouse Old Barber? Is it in your shop? Is it, two-hour parking posted there?
No, there, it's, there's, it's not even in your ordinance. I read your ordinance. I didn't see it. That's why I think you have to change your ordinance.
Is that only on Main at the time?
I think it is.
Okay.
So they take advantage of that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't agree with any business owner parking in front or taking up customer spaces.
Well, and, and what I hate is, like I said, he's got all that room behind his building. If he just cleaned up some of the trash back there, like tonight, there's I drove by there and there's all kinds of broken parts of air conditioners and I don't even know what else back there. It's just god awful. I would hate to live behind it. God bless those people who live behind there.
They, uh, go in and clean out, uh, rentals that people love.
Or garages and.
Things like that.
And it brings in rodents. Mm-hmm. Yeah, brings in rodents. It's nasty, so.
I've got several trash pandas in my backyard too.
Yeah. Well, any- Yeah. Well, any help that, that we could get and quickly, soon, soon. We don't wanna wait forever on this till next year or something. I would like this done, like that ordinance amended soon so that something could be done with them. So thank you.
Have you, have you talked to him at all?
Um, Norman went down and he's, we, he's tried because he's the building owner.
Yeah.
And he's tried several times. And the last time he talked to the guy, he took a bag of trash down there that we had picked up. And it just, he's not gonna do anything. He's not gonna do anything. So.
And Norman is the one that asked me to come before the council and ask these guys. And I know I talked to Buddy and Jim, I think Chris. Uh, I'm not sure who else, but, uh, anyway, that was several meetings ago and I kinda forgot about it. Anyway, he's in favor of the two hour parking. And he's also got two more apartments that's going to be opened up next month upstairs.
I can't understand why they won't even park over there by the parking lot, those parking spaces. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think up until the alley, I mean, I would, that for me, that's business, business parking.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And then the enclosure of the dumpsters, I mean, I know. My dad or Frankie, he, you know, want, had a dumpster at one time and got rid of it because he didn't want to build a fence around it.
Right, exactly.
But, you know, if you're gonna enforce it, you need to force it with everybody.
It's overflowing tonight. If you drive by there tonight, it, it's a constant problem with that place.
I don't think that's gonna stop the rats or anything, but it's gonna make it look nicer.
Yeah, it, it's gonna, I wouldn't wanna be the neighbor that lives behind it. Like I said, God bless that lady, whoever she is. You might go talk to her, Vito.
Okay.
And tell her I told you.
I think I know who it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Susie.
Uh, committee reports, uh, ABC.
Good evening. So today we actually had two on our docket. Um, one withdrew their permit and that was Rusted Root. Um, they're looking at expanding, so that'll be put on hold for next month. Then we had the Silver Bullet. They actually had a violation, unfortunately. Um, the violation was for, um. They re, they redid their back patio and they did not have it approved with Mary, with the excise officers. So the process is, is if any business is wanting to expand on their permits, on their, um, floor plan with their liquor permits, they have to have it. Approved by our, um, compliance officers and then it also has to be approved with our excise officers as well. So. Um, they did get a violation for that. Um, but we went ahead and did an automatic renewal for the next year for their permit. So. Um, we do have a new excise officer. His name is Sergeant Brian Stewart. Um, we had, um, Officer Bell for years. Um, he's been amazing, so we wished him a lot of luck on his next adventure. Um, but Brian Stewart will be the new, um, officer. So I plan to get with all the businesses and let them know who the new person is. So. If they have any issues, they can reach out to him. So. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Ashley.
Thanks, Ashley.
You should have Greenscape Commission Compliance and Public Safety report, uh, financial, Dan?
Uh, nothing, the same, except for the budget information.
Okay. We'll move to unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. Uh, General Ordinance Number Four. Two thousand nineteen is the salary ordinance. And it is up for approval on second reading only. Uh, before we do that, I. Put in your packet a email from the court judge requesting some changes in his staff salary. So. Um. Everybody's plugged, this budget plugs in at two percent. So. I'll leave it to the coun, I'll defer to the council to, uh. Uh, discuss, uh, how they wanna proceed with the judge's request or if they wanna proceed. But as the salary ordinance stands, it's two percent.
In the past, I know a year or so ago, didn't the judge ask, when he was the first to give you his budget and ask for a raise? I mean, I, I, I like the guy. Trust me, I think he's a great guy.
They got it, but the budget's already put together. It's unfair for one department to get three and a half percent and the rest of the city get two percent. So. Uh, my recommendation is keep it at two percent. And then he can talk to the new clerk treasurer next year, but, uh, I sent this budget over to him. In plenty of time where it could have been done before time, but everything's plugged in there and, uh. But I just say we stick with two percent. Everybody else that gets.
I would agree.
When did you send the budget over to him?
I wanna say. Probably August.
This is dated July eighth. On this letter aside.
I don't know.
The only thing that I would say, I mean, I. I agree with keeping, you know, everybody at two percent, but he does bring up a good point that the courts operate. Well under budget and does produce. Pretty decent amount of revenue for the city.
Well, in saying that, they pay no utilities. They pay no rent.
I mean, it's a city.
I, I understand it's a city, but we're doing a lot of stuff that is not in this city. We're doing Claremont, we're doing Cumberland, places like that that, uh.
I mean, as long as they have the capacity, bring it in. I mean, through the courts and we, we're making money off of it.
By the way, we, uh, Lincoln Township School Corporation's gonna start filing our court. Pike's gonna start filing our court. Washington Township's gonna start filing shortly. So we're gonna start having all the outlying, uh, school townships are gonna start filing here as of two thousand twenty.
So do you see that, that there is room for improvement in this, in this budget? I mean, do you?
I do not. I don't know where you're gonna get it from.
I'm not.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
That's okay.
That's not my, that's not my loss.
I mean, I, I say we just do vote by vote. I mean.
Or could we address it again? Could we address it at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, you can amend it after the first of the year.
I'm asking the mayor. Sorry.
Um, you can. I mean, you just, you can, but, uh, uh. It's, it's up for approval on second reading only. So I'll ask if, unless you wanna amend the ordinance, I'll ask for a motion or ask, I'll tell you what I'll ask for. Uh. Motion to waive the rules to read by title only. For second reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second?
I'll second.
And we'll, we have to vote on it and I'll start on my left. Jim?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time I'll ask the clerk to read, uh, the General Ordinance Number Four into the record by title only.
Ordinance Number Four. Is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rates for appointed and elected officials. And employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana in the year twenty twenty. Be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thanks, Dan. This time, uh, General Ordinance Four, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on second reading only. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. General Ordinance Four is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only, please.
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
Second. We'll begin voting on my left. Jim?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. At this time I'll ask the clerk to read, uh, General Ordinance Number Four, two thousand nineteen into the record by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number Four, two thousand nineteen is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed. And elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana. In the year twenty twenty, be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, General Ordinance Four, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The ordinance passes, please register your vote. General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand nineteen, which is the two thousand and twenty budget. Is up for approval on second reading. Uh, this evening, uh, at this time I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title. Nope, I can't do that. I'm sorry. This time I'll ask the clerk to read the motion or the ordinance into the record in its entirety.
General Ordinance Number Five. Be it ordained, resolved by the Beach Grove City Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City. For the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty. The sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified. Subject to the laws governing the same, such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include. All expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City. The property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form Four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner. Prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect. From and after its passage and approved by the Beach Grove City Council. Name of the adopting entity fiscal body is Beach Grove City Council. Type of adopting entity fiscal body is city council. Date of adoption, ten seven, twenty nineteen. Funds, oh, oh, six, one. The rainy day fund is adopted budget zero, top, adopted tax levy zero. And adopted tax rate zero. The general fund. The one oh one. Adopted budget, nine million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Adopted tax levy, six million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The adopted tax rate is one point eight three four eight. The debt service. That is, uh, the adopted budget is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The adopted tax levy, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. The adopted tax rate is zero point zero five four two percent. The fire pension. Adopted budget, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Adopted tax levy, sixty thousand. The adopted tax rate, zero point zero one five eight. Police pension, adopted budget, six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Adopted tax levy, eighty-five thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero two two four. Local roads and streets, adopted budget, five hundred and ninety-five thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. And adopted tax rate is zero. The motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Adopted tax levy is zero and the adopted tax rate is zero. The continuing education, the adopted budget is forty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. The park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, fifty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. The adopted budget, twelve million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. The adopted tax levy, seven million, three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the adopted tax rate is one point nine two seven two. Uh, the. Public safety low at the eleven seventy fund is the adopted budget, one million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on second reading only. At this time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. This evening, uh, council, General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand nineteen is up for approval on third and final reading. Uh, at this time I'll ask the clerk to, sorry, Dan, read it into the record once again.
Want a drink?
Yeah, no kidding.
Record or just play it back?
Uh, ordinance number five, twenty nineteen. Be it ordained, resolved by the Beach Grove City Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty. The sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and. For the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year. Unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City. The property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form Four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the Beach Grove City Council. Name and adopting entity fiscal body, Beach Grove City Council. Type of adopting entity fiscal body, city council. Date of adoption, ten seven, twenty nineteen. The funds, the rainy day fund, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. General fund, adopted budget, nine million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. The adopted tax levy, six million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Adopted tax rate, one point eight three four eight. Debt service. Free, excuse me. Debt service, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars is the adopted budget. Adopted tax levy is two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the adopted tax rate is zero point zero five four two. The fire pension, adopted budget, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Adopted tax levy, sixty thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero one five eight. Police pension, adopted budget, six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Adopted tax levy, eighty-five thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero two two four. Local roads and street, adopted budget, five hundred and ninety-five thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. And the adopted tax rate is zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, one million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Continuing education, adopted budget, forty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, fifty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. The adopted budget is twelve million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. The adopted tax levy is seven million, three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. And the adopted tax rate, one point nine two seven two. Um, public safety low at the eleven seventy fund, the adopted budget is one million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And that's it.
Thanks, Dan. General ordinance number five, two thousand nineteen, is up for approval on third and final reading. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please, uh, register your vote. Thank you, council. Dan, while they're, uh, signing, I want to reminisce, reminisce for just a second. When we first started in twelve, that, uh, local road and street budget was, I think, two hundred thousand maybe at the most. And no community grant funding.
Right.
You know, and there was no rainy day balance. Uh, there was no park non-reverting. Um, there was, I think continuing education was two thousand dollars. So, uh, what-
It's changed a lot.
So what does seven years bring you? So, you just think about that, and you appreciate it if you, uh, have been part of it.
Not counting what we paid cash for.
Yeah. That concludes unfinished business. Uh, under new business, we have, uh, three items. The first is Resolution number eight, two thousand nineteen, concerning, uh, the, uh, the tax rate and, uh, to protect us from a clerical error downtown. So, Dan, you want to read it into the record?
Yeah, let me just explain this. This is basically if on one of them, if the decimal point was moved over, where we wouldn't be held liable for it, that's what this is all about.
And it's something that should get done fairly soon.
Yes, it will be turned in with our entire budget. Uh, Resolution number eight, twenty nineteen. Statement of objection, appealing action of tax adjustment board or county auditor in accordance with IC six dash one point one dash seventeen dash fifteen. Whereas the city of Beach Grove, Marion County, Indiana, objects to the tax adjustment board or county auditor fixing any tax rate or levy different from the amounts fixed by the city of Beach Grove, Marion County, now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body of the city of Beach Grove, Marion County, Indiana, that this statement be filed with the Department of Local Government Finance as provided in IC six dash one point one dash seventeen dash fifteen, in order to restore the tax rate and levies. Be it further resolved that this resolution supersedes any previous resolutions regarding the same. Duly adopted the seventh day of October, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Floor is open for any questions or comments. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution number eight, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve number, Resolution number eight, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please, uh, register your vote.
Please. Did you second?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
I'll go ahead and, uh, uh, reverse the order and I'll have, uh, our RDC president come up and present the two thousand and twenty budget, Don.
Uh, good evening, city council members, Mr. Mayor. Um, part of the RDC's requirement is that we present an annual report to you, the city, as well as the budget for two thousand and twenty. Uh, I'd like to go over what we did this last year. Um, as you know, when I spoke last year, we had a plan to put signage along the highways. And, um, that plan with construction costs quickly escalated out of, uh, fiscal sanity and didn't make sense for the city. So, while we did the initial designs, we have put that on hold for the time being. Um, that was one of ours. Um, we also continued our work on the, uh, Beach Grove, uh, Greenway. That is coming in two thousand and twenty. Uh, we put a lot of money into that, and, um, those were the main things we did. Um, the other thing we did that was pretty cool is, uh, the Beach Grove Parks Department came to us to help them on new playground equipment. They had enough money to almost get, uh, Sarah Bolton Park's equipment, but none for Don Chalice. And through us giving them the money or helping them, they were able to get a discount. And now both of our city parks have brand-new playground equipment that is in good shape for hopefully the next twenty years. Um, seeing how many people use those playgrounds and those parks, uh, I, I, that's just investing in our citizens and our community, so we were real, uh, real happy with that. Um, the other thing we did this year is we agreed to help on a six hundred thousand dollar grant for Next Stop Beach Grove. We agreed to help cover part of the grant writing fee, which ended up being about thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, that grant did not get approved or accepted, but, uh, we were there with a partner for them, and I hope they will come back to future RDCs as well and, and try that again because, you know, fixing up the businesses on Main Street, it's just a, it's a good investment for our community and all that. Um, so those were the major ones we, we did, as well as, um, we had a new potential, uh, uh, development in the CSX property. And, uh, that was sold, and they have come to the redevelopment commission to ask for some sewer improvements and help on that. And we are in the process of reaching out on that. So, that is a, a big development, and, um, tho- those to me are the positives. The negatives, um, we still didn't have a meeting on the, the long-term plan of Beach Grove or discuss that. And that's just because, again, we're volunteer RDC that just does not have the, the capability to do that. Plus, we're a fairly small budget. Uh, the other storms looming are, are sewer, are landfill, which, why a government would buy a landfill is beyond me, but, um, there are issues that are starting to come up with the co- with the, the pack on it. And those could be getting expensive. We are exploring what our insurance covers and doesn't cover, but in initial looks, it looks like we're probably going to get stuck for all of the bill, so, yes, Chris?
At, at one time, wasn't half of that owned by Morehouse or something?
It still is.
Still is, okay. So we're only liable for an hour and a half?
Well, I mean, I'll put it this way. I think we'll end up being liable for all of it, because if I were Morehouse and they came to me, I'd just file bankruptcy on it and say, have at it. That's what, that's what companies do all the time.
Would that then still fall to Beach Grove?
It's going to fall to s- the state or somebody, kind of like refined metals when they went bankrupt. It, it, it ended up being the taxpayers.
Better than the Grove, I mean, no offense to the state.
I agree, I mean, why we got it in the first place is beyond me. I mean, well, it's been a disaster, but, I mean, we had a survey go out there, and we've got some trees growing, and we've got some erosion that we're going to have to look at next year and the year after possibly fix. And now, it's been, it hasn't been like officially cited to where I D M said, you have to fix it, but that could be coming down the road, and, and when you're dealing with environmental impact like that, you know, just get out the checkbook, because it can start getting expensive in a hurry. So, we're gonna, in twenty and twenty-one, we're gonna need to stay on top of that and make sure that we, we correct it now before it gets really bad, because, uh, you know, the leaching into the creek, I mean, that's when you start getting into big fines and stuff like that, so. And, and that's the other thing, I'm not sure which half we really own, so we're gonna need, we're actually need people to start working on that a little more and figure out what we do long-term with this. Because, I mean, it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse if anything, so long-term, it's a definite liability for the city.
There was a warning for, uh, from-
Yes, ma'am. Craig, go ahead.
Sure that it was not this administration that bought that landfill?
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is, goes back a long ways. And, I mean, it's, we've had little things pop up here and there that we have fixed. And I know the RDC tried, uh, back in, what, thirteen or fourteen, suggested the city of Indianapolis that maybe they'd want to take it. And when they got done laughing, they politely said no, and, uh, uh, it's just a problem that we're going to have and we're not going to get rid of. You know, it's kind of like, if you believe that, I'll, I got swampland in Florida for you, I mean, you know, I've got a landfill in Beach Grove for you, it could be the new joke, so. That, that is a, a, a warning flag on, on the future that could affect RDC budgets. And, uh, the other thing I'd like to mention real quick is, I'd like to thank our members. Um, Kathy has been our secretary and been a, uh, uh, minute writer since two thousand and twelve. I mean, that's seven years she has done that. And, uh, she'll play the minutes, then she'll go home and listen to them again, type them up, and, I mean, she's never complained about it. She just does it over and over. And, uh, what a great asset she's been. Ron Moat's been on there since two thousand and twelve, too, as the vice president and doing other things. Again, never really asked for anything, just shows up and does what he's supposed to, asks questions. And, uh, Tara Wolf, another one who stepped up, I mean, she had a baby and four days later she was at a meeting, so, I mean, uh, and Ed Bell. So, when you look at it, you've got citizens who are stepping up, donating their time, uh, for a great city. And I, I think that's a testament to our community and the people in our community. And I would like to thank them, because, again, they've made the job so much easier in that they will ask the questions and when there's meetings to go to, because we have, we'll have volunteer meetings, not so much volunteer, but the mayor will ask us to be at a meeting here or there. If I can't do it or somebody else can't do it, one of them steps up, so. The RDC is in different meetings, and Kathy's reached out to Speedway and other communities about RDC protocols and stuff like that, so. Um, coming this fall, again, with the CSX property, right now, it has a zero value on it, because it's a hundred and thirty acres of wood and three ponds. But, and if we can get it in its own TIF district, registered in two thousand and nineteen, it starts out in two thousand and twenty as zero value, and then with the development that's proposed, and I've heard numbers from anywhere from ten to fifty million dollars over the next ten years. That would be money that would be in a TIF allocation, and that would be good for future mayors and city councils, because that TIF will stand on its own for the next thirty years, and that can give Beach Grove a chance for redevelopment, where the current ones will expire in two thousand and thirty. So, that is something that they will be coming to you guys with, to get, hopefully get approval. Robert runs working on that and the notifications, and that'll be a priority that we get that done by December first, so that we can meet the legal obligations. So you may be hearing about that in, in November. And, uh, that's, that's something to keep an eye out for, so. Um, trying to think here, is there anything I missed?
Well, if you can reflect on, as we have with the previous budget, uh, where we were and where we are. Give a little history about.
The good news is, well, and I, it's funny, because, uh, when I, I came on, uh, the RDC because of social media, Anthony D Davidson put out a, a, a question, would anybody like to belong to the redevelopment commission? And I hadn't really followed, I'd come to some city, but I hadn't really followed it, and I didn't realize what I was stepping into, uh. You know, the RDC was really not a very good reputable firm back then, and it had a lot of questions. I remember one of the first city council meetings, when city council members were proposing to abolish it. And, uh, we had a lot of bad debt that we still are paying on, but in two years, we can possibly pay that off, and your RDC will be debt-free. And because of the frugality of a Ron Moat and Catholic chapel in questioning things, um, this sewer developments we'll talk about in the budget, it's going to be, could be up to six hundred thousand dollars. We'll be able to pay cash for it. There won't be any RDC bonds or anything like that. And, boy, that, that is going to be a good thing. Again, for the amount of development we're getting in, that CSX land has never been developed, and it will help the, the north side of Emerson in the Beach Grove area. I mean, it's going to attract people, there'll be workers there. They'll maybe want to come to downtown Beach Grove to eat lunch and stuff, so, I mean, it's going to be a big positive for our community. And it's going to add assessed value, which will help the schools and everything. Um, the other thing that we will have is, next year, we will finally see our greenway, which was started in like two thousand and three or four, come to fruition. And if you think about it, you drive around the city, there are greenways everywhere, all these communities have them. Uh, Fishers and Noblesville just tore out train track to add another trail. And walking trails are cheap, millennials love them, and that's the generation that's replacing us, so. Again, it'll give us a competitive advantage in the real estate market, it'll make Beach- I'll just tell you, in my community alone, houses are selling in one to two days, because people hear about a greenway and they see Beach Grove, they want to live here, so. Um, that'll be happening next year, and the RDC as part of the budget will put the final amount of funding for that in. But when I started in twelve, that was one of my, or thirteen, that was one of the things I mentioned as my goals. I wanted to see the greenway completed, because I thought the residents needed something like that, so. To see that, that, that's going to be a big feather in our cap as a city. I mean, it's, it's been really, uh, rewarding as far as that goes. And so then, to talk about our budget, I've listed two things for the budget this year, and they will be the sewer, which, again, we don't know the exact cost, so we put it at six hundred thousand. I think that might be a little high, but I'd rather come and tell you it's going to be six hundred thousand than say four hundred and then say, oh, yeah, by the way, it was six hundred thousand, so. I'd rather approach that with a little more honesty. And then the other thing, we will have money for the greenway. Now, the good news about the greenway is, we will get some of that back once we've paid, that'll come back in the fall. And then there was one other item that we were approached with in our last meeting, and that was the possibility of the RDC funding a city website.
Yes.
And, um, I did not put that in the budget, I wasn't sure how we wanted to deal with that, if we want to let the RDC for two thousand and twenty do that, or if that would be something the city council would support the RDC doing. We could approach that in our October meeting and get that started, but I really wanted feedback, because one of the things that Ron, Kathy, and myself are concerned with is if it's a citywide website, will the citywide departments take active advantage of it and use it? Because we don't really want to pay twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars, and then find out that not all the agencies and everyth- everybody's using it, and it's not up to its full potential. So that'd be something that, we went to Angel and asked her to go back to the departments and ask, and that'd be something we'd welcome your guys' opinion and input in on as well. But those are the three things we have, and we should be able to cover all those obligations with the cash we have, because we've built up a fair amount, and then, like I say, in twenty, twenty-one or two, your debt will be paid off from the RDC, and you guys will have between eight and eleven million dollars in unused RDC money to either figure out more development or be done with the RDC. That'll be your guys' choice or scale it way back, or whoever's here in, in those years, so. Um, your RDC is in a good position, and the one thing, again, I would caution is, I look around, and if you read about RDCs, they, yeah, they do help, but they have a tremendous amount of abuse tied to them. Um, I look at cities like Greenwood that have poured millions of dollars into failed business projects that their taxpayers are going to be on the hook for, so. Going forward, I, I would recommend that, again, the RDC be very frugal and conservative in dealings with private business. Um, if a business is good enough to me, they should be able to come into a community and afford to pay their own way. Um, the sewer envelop- the sewer development for the CSX property, I look at that as the city putting an outlet there and then somebody hooking up to it, but, you know, given fifty, and even Next Stop Beach Grove, we were willing to help on the grant, but we were not given money directly to the businesses. And each of those twelve businesses actually had money in, they've already put money into Next Stop Beach Grove, so. I, I would caution in the future that, again, we be very frugal and conservative, and I would also, for two thousand and twenty, recommend that a member of the city council serve on the RDC. It takes in over a million dollars a year, and I think it would be good to have one of you serving on there, if not as president, a- at least on there, so you can report back to the council as well, so that there's a, there's a good chain of communication there. So with that, if there are any questions or any needs, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I'd ask for approval of our budget and our yearly report per law. Yes, Chris? Oh.
Well, I had a question first, Dan.
Sure, Chris.
On, on the, um, on the website, uh, I've listened to a lot of financial reports from Dan, and he said that, that it's been done for these last few years by volunteers. What did you hope to improve on that, that we would want to spend, like, I think you said twenty thousand?
It was actually twenty-nine thousand, but-
Twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, but we're, the RDC's been asked to cover twenty thousand, seven hundred. The way I understand it is it would become a dot gov website. Um, like the Parks Department and people like that, they would add, the website would be, you know, the ability to pay there and all that, and it'd be secure, um, traffic tickets, all that, the police could be on there, the fire department could be on there. All your inner-city services would be linked, and there'd be someone taking care of it. And I think, you know, volunteer is great, and I have no issue with it, but that was, that's what's been suggested to us, and then we've heard that, yeah, there's favorable feedback from other people, but again, to your point, Chris, I want to, I want to get buy-in for it. I don't, I don't think any of us on the board object to it, but, again, I don't, I don't want to buy something and then find out six months from now the police don't want to use it, or the Parks Department has a different plan. So, it's, needs to have the whole city in on it and say, yeah, we want to do this, and this is what we need for our- So it's, needs to have the whole city in on it and say, yeah, we wanna do this and this is what we need for our portion of the website.
I agree with you.
Well, I'll give an example of a, of a issue with the volunteer website. Um, I had uh, emailed the volunteer part of the website to ask if they would put the fire ops pictures 'cause myself and two other representatives from our city went to the fire ops. And I didn't even get a response back so I could get the fire ops posted because that truly shows the community what we're out doing for them.
Right.
So, so the, you know, so I think a website like this would better represent us so we could get things.
And see, and that was our other question, Ms. Lamping, is which depo- if, who's gonna be responsible for the Parks Department website? Who's gonna be responsible for the library, the police? You know, are there gonna be specific individuals tagged with, hey, when we have photos or this or that, you will upload them? And, and that's the other thing is we wanna make sure it's, it's functional and it's usable. 'Cause it, if you go to the Parks Department website and there's nothing there, it's not user-friendly, what's the point?
Our non-for-profit walks, I mean, there's just so much information. People are always saying, why can't I, it's, I don't see it, it's not posted. So it's just a community, yeah.
For, for the modern era, you almost, we all, and again, they will build more functionality into it, they'll be able to take care of it. The website we have is nice, but again, we're moving forward. We're, we're mo- we're moving into a, basically where everything's paid with an app or online. You know, like, you don't write checks anymore, you don't carry cash anymore. You have a chip on your card, you go somewhere and. One of the few people. But you know, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's our technology's changing and the way we access people and work in this world is changing. And you know, as a city, again, what are we targeting? You know, we're targeting the younger people. And Beach Grove's in a wonderful opportunity for that because younger people want smaller houses, they want cheaper living. And Beach Grove has ninety percent houses that are two-bedroom, one-bath type houses that are smaller and easier to take care of. So you know, they also want that urban functionality of, I gotta pay the sewer bill. They can get onto their phone and fifteen minutes later, it's paid. So those are the type of things I think going forward that we need to look at as a city.
Thank you.
Your mo-. Yes, sir. Okay, now I will read the, the budget. Please accept the following Twenty Twenty budget for the Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission. Our budget is as follows, Two Thousand and Sixteen bond payments will be five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. Actually, they'll be Two Thousand and Nineteen correction, or Two Thousand and Twenty, excuse me, I forgot what year we're in. Uh, the greenway work is estimated at two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And then the sewage infrastructure improvements will be est- estimated at six-hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the total budget will be one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, six hundred.
Thank you.
Council, that is uh, up for approval this evening, so first, not any questions. I'll ask for a motion to approve the RDC budget for Twenty Twenty.
I'll make said motion.
I, I would like to, to make her motion, but make sure that we say that it's Twenty Twenty budget. 'Cause it says on the paper, Twenty Sixteen.
I'll correct that.
Okay.
Sorry, thanks.
So just, go ahead and say the Twenty Twenty budget.
Twenty Twenty budget, I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign.
And uh, you thanked everyone else, Don, thank you to you.
Yes.
Oh, not a problem, thank you guys, it's been great working for you.
Thanks.
Hey, is this yours? Hey, Don, is this yours? Mine wasn't, I, I packed away my stapler.
Okay. The last order of business, um, and we will suspend the council meeting temporarily to hold a public hearing concerning an additional appropriation. And Craig, there was a sign-up sheet, if anybody wanted to speak on behalf of the additional appropriation.
I did not see, I'll go back and get it, I didn't see names on the second sheet. You guys look?
The uh, floor is open for a public hearing for the additional appropriation. There is no one uh, that wants to uh, speak about the additional appropriation. We will close the public hearing and go right to the resolution. And before we do that, Dan, could you give us some insight on, on the resolution?
Yes, what this is, is uh, the Eleven Seventy Fund, which is the Public Safety Fund. Back early this year, I can't remember what month, but the council approved the hiring of some police, fire, whatever. When we found out we could actually pay the beginning salaries out of this fund for these police officers. So anyway, at this time, we need this money to take care of the obligations that the council had entered into.
Thank you. Before we uh, read it into the record, is there any questions or comments from council members?
I mean, that's what this money's there for, is, I mean, you can't just sit and look at it, so, needs to be done.
No other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read uh, Resolution Number Nine, Two Thousand and Nineteen into the record, please.
Resolution Number Nine, Twenty Nineteen, it's an additional appropriation from the Public Safety Local Income Tax, where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than originally appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council, Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name and number, Public Safety Fund, number Eleven Seventy. Local Fund, Public Safety, number One Seventy. Major budget classifications, salaries, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Total for additional appropriation approval, Public Safety Fund, Eleven Seventy, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Section Two, be it further ordained that the proper notice was advertised in the Indy Star and the IBJ on September eighteenth, Twenty Nineteen. Section Three, be it further ordained by the Beach Grove City Council that the above amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for salaries shall be transferred to the General Fund for fire and police salaries to maintain a positive cash flow. This was discussed in Twenty Eighteen during the Twenty Nineteen budget process to allow police and fire to hire additional personnel, adopted this seventh day of October, Twenty Nineteen. And uh, I don't wanna work that now. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number Nine, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That concludes uh, new business this evening, council. Last order of business is council comments. Start with Jim.
Well, thank you everybody that came tonight. And from the reports we heard tonight about Danny, how the city's standing right now, definitely wanna commend Dennis and Dan for their work, they're city-going, they did a great job.
Uh, thank you everyone for coming and um, Buddy's not here, so we'll get out early.
Thanks everyone for coming out.
Um, I just wanna thank everybody in attendance and I just wanna give a special recognition, a recognition to the Fire Ops One-O-One, Local Four-S sixteen, September twenty-fourth, Two Thousand and Nineteen, an opportunity of a live to, to participate and gain a perspective about the change, about the, the dangers of the, of the job and the firefighters' needs. Uh, myself, Jim Kaufman and Frank Meskary, uh, we were able to do a scenario run-through which included EMS overdose, uh, overdose call. Uh, we did a search and rescue inside a burning building. We did a one-hundred-foot ladder climb, extricating a trap, a victim of a car crash. And then we also did a fighting, uh, uh, um, fighting a fire on the second floor of a building. Uh, it is our obligation to the citizens we serve to make sure all police, EMS and fire have the public safety needs, public, their public safety needs are funded, to make sure all their public safety needs are funded. And then I also just wanna uh, reiterate what councillor today said at the last meeting, that our city is in the best shape it's ever been in. Thank you.
No comment?
I just wanna thank everybody for coming, have a good evening.
Um, one last or uh, thing for the council. We will have a special council meeting on Monday, October twenty-first, here in these chambers at seven P M. Board of Sanitation and Board of Works meets at six. Then we will convene a special meeting of the uh, common council to uh, speak with the uh, representatives of the former CSX property and talk about uh, their initiatives and what they would like to, to see us help them with. So we will meet here uh, as a council on Monday, October twenty-first, seven P M.
Just letting everyone know, I'll be absent that day, I have a pre-planned business trip that I can't reschedule.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Meeting is adjourned at, Dan, I don't know.
Eight fifteen.
Thank you.